Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the regular scheduled meeting of the City of Griffin Board of Commissioners, August twenty seventh, two thousand and twenty-four. We'd like to welcome everybody. We will begin with a pledge of allegiance being led by Commissioner Brad Wright, followed with the invocation by Commissioner Tremont Tinsley, please join us.
Both questions have my father. We're here today to ask your blessings and guidance for our duties as elected officials. We pray for strength, love, knowledge, and understanding. Help us to recognize and solve the problems under presented, make our solutions fair and just, best interest for everyone. Help us to overcome our shortcomings and keep each United as a team for betterment of the city and the city. With great entertainment. We have a motion to approve the agenda as presented. Commissioner Ward with a motion, second by Commissioner Murray. All in favor, please signal by raising hand. Seven zero. We do not have any public, uh, presentations or proclamations tonight. We're moving into citizens' comments. At this time, the mayor opens the floor through comments from the audience. Comments should relate to specific agenda items not listed on the agenda for a public hearing or to a concern within the jurisdiction of the city. Commission meetings serve the purpose of conducting city business and are not a forum for unlimited expression of opinion. Stevie to the citizens' comment policy adopted on February thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, and posted for public view. All speakers shall be limited to three minutes, which will be strictly followed and enforced. The mayor reserves the right, limit comments, matters remain to city business, and may refer speakers to the city manager or other staff for resolution. Do I have anybody on my left side like to come before the board? Go ahead, Dr. Jones. Name the address for the record, please.
Dr. Ashana Jones, um, I'm coming because of two concerns. Number one, I had been asked by the April Park residents to ask you guys, where have you been? Um, given that they were displaced on Thursday, it was a very public thing, given that when you're seeking election or reelection, your signs can be found all over their neighborhoods. But yet with this crisis, we had not seen any of our leadership. Um, I understand that from what I know, that one of you was sick. Um, the only elected representative we had to show up was Sue McDonald from the school board. Um, so they're very disheartened because they're trying to figure out where you guys have been. Um, secondly, this also gives a spotlight to things we've addressed before about emergency housing that we don't have because we had this situation to happen. And there's literally nowhere for them to go but to the hotels after being displaced. I think this conversation needs to be had again as far as another strategic plan update. We do need emergency housing here. Um, I don't know how many times we have to have these different incidents, whether it's Rayneely, whether it's Edgewood, whether it's Ava, when we have citizens that don't have anywhere to go, um, upon being displaced. The other thing is we really need to look at what can be done as far as these slum lords that are allowed to continue to take money from these residents while not doing anything to keep up these properties. I, I think that's, that's a disgrace that they've been allowed to do that for so long. So we really need to look into ways that can be held responsible for those types of things. Um, also, I wanted to address the revenue bond issue. Um, I still have the same concerns as before. And specifically when asking about bond council, why the developer was allowed to select bond councils? Um, it's my understanding that bond council gets ten percent, so that means four million dollars of that particular project, and there was no competitive process or an RFP for that. Uh, also, given the fact that they were talking about waiving the audit and performance review. So I think that's very concerning, considering we're always talking about transparency and fiscal conservatism. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Jones. Is there anybody else on my left side like to come before the board? Is there anybody on my right side like to come before the board?
Yes, ma'am.
Are y'all gonna come together? If y'all are together, it's fine. Welcome. If you could please give your names and address for the record. If y'all are together, please.
Good morning, uh, good afternoon. I'm sorry, my day is long. My name is Tasha Sanders, and I live at seventeen twenty-eight Westminster Central in the Westminster Hills subdivision. And there were a couple of concerns that we would like to bring to your attention. Um, I'm gonna start out with this Pine Hill, uh, Pine Hill. Um, I'm not sure of what the process is, and I'm wondering what to adhere to it. Um, there are several dead trees limbs hanging over in the street. I'm a victim of a tree, uh, tree falling on top of my car as I was driving down, um, not Pine Hill, but Ninety-two, um, and and it was a dead tree that fell. And so when, um, I see several, and it's in the like four oh eight addresses, like four oh eight Pine Hill, in that area, if you drive right there, if you drive past there, you'll see several trees leaned over and a couple that are dead that have, some have broken off and some have, um, you know, and we've been able to get out and pull some of them, but that is a, a true danger to people, um, driving. So I just want to bring it to your attention.
That's on South or North Pine?
Pine, going towards Ellen.
Okay, north.
I'm looking at it. Um, and so, uh, if we could know like a, um, a schedule or something that's part, what that looks like. Um, in addition to, uh, seeing on off of Pine Hill, we're gonna go to Cardinal, um, which is, uh, right off of Pine Hill. Um, from my understanding, the city mows that lawn, mows that grass down. Um, there are three, uh, fire hydrants here that have, uh, the, the lawn has the, the, the grass has outgrown. I want to say this to you all. If there's a situation where some houses get caught, touched on fire there, and you pass through the limestone fire hydrant, you would not be able to find them. Um, and so I wish that you all could also let us know the schedule or what that looks like because once a year with the type of rain that we have there on season, um, for that to be mowed, I think that's unacceptable. And so I would like to bring attention to that, um, that, that's right on Cardinal Avenue.
And your last name is Ms. Sanders?
Yes.
Okay. Yes, sir. My name is Joseph Proctor. I live in Westminster Hills. Uh, I have to do that for some too, uh, you know, um, we have churches in the neighborhood and, and I, I think we have some, uh, B boards there because, uh, we have the neighbors that really think that they're on Atlanta Street where we come. Uh, and it, it, it's relentless. You know, I got an old sayback that I was having golf, so it should be seen like that, especially you have those golf course coming through there. Uh, somebody might get hit, and then we have another, like you're saying.
And it's the free traffic in the area, like that area's growing. And so we can use it to not only our, our children, but our golf fields as well. If you would take, send someone out there to just drive around our community, you would see several dead, like clear.
Can I go? Thank you. We'll definitely. Is there anybody else on my, on my right side like to come before? Welcome. How are you doing? Name and address for the record, please.
Good evening. My name is Gil Mark Jr. I live at Westminster Hills subdivision of Westminster Drive. Um, piggyback off of what has been best, but we've got several problems going on. Uh, we need our roads repaired. They've been repaired in eighteen years. Uh, we have spoken with a Ms. Ellis. She said that it's going to be done in two to three years. I don't think it's going to be five. Uh, phase three of our development that has grown and basically got sidewalks on both sides of the street. We have none. We've got elders that walk over that way. We've got residents that come down the street, and we don't have any sidewalks. We'd like to have sidewalks here that are all paved. Uh, we do have school buses now. There were one when I first moved. There are now five. Uh, we've got children out there. They're standing out there at forty, and they have to stand in the street, and you can't see them. They don't always have reflective wear on. I don't know why their parents don't come out there. They're not mine, but it's a dangerous situation. It's fading down the street, which they have said goes on all the time. They need to slow down. They don't. And somebody's going to get hurt. Uh, the other thing we need to do is, uh, we've got city of Griffin trucks riding up and down the neighborhood. Therefore, they are also tearing up the streets. They are heavy trucks. I don't know, uh, what they're going back on Avenue, why they have to come through a residential neighborhood, but they're continuing to come through. And it seems like they should be able to go off of sixteen and to go to wherever, you know, whatever they're doing back. But then if you want those streets, we've got potholes and, um, the streets are just holes. It's in there, hole. And we'd like to have roads repaired if they are all possible. If somebody's been addressed that, we'd very appreciate it. Thank you for your time.
Is there anybody else on my right side like to come before the board? I was asking if there's, thank you for being here. Is there anybody else on my right side like to come before the board? Okay. Thank you all for your, oh, come on. How are you doing? Welcome. If you, name and address for the record, please.
I'm Steven Lattimore, and I am a proud citizen of Griffin. I like being here. Um, it's been a blessing to my, my family and I. We live in Westminster Hills, Mount Westminster Hills and its family, and we were concerned about additional streetlights and some sidewalks perhaps. Um, that would make it, uh, we have a lot of new families, and when I say new families, um, young families with children who should be able to walk on the sidewalk. So if you're gonna be expanding, um, city services and things of that nature, we would like to put our, our hat, uh, be it in hats. Um, um, I'm sorry. Um, so we know we would need more streetlights. Um, uh, we were looking for, uh, he mentioned the potholes and resourcing the city streets back there. Um, again, we have a lot of new families that have just moved into the neighborhood within the last three years. So with the increase of new taxpayers, and let us not talk about the taxes, because I'm saying taxes. Our taxes have been grossly increased. Those are things that we are concerned about because we moved here. It's, um, we love where we live. It's beautiful. We love our neighbors. We have quiet, and we have a very diverse neighborhood that everyone gets along. We want to keep it like that, okay? Um, but we just want to know, we just want to add that to the pot for messing with Westminster Hills, and in some portion is one entrance off of South Pine Hill from Shoak Creek. So if those could be addressed, we would be grateful.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else on my right side like to come before the board? Thank you all for your time. So we're moving into public hearings, and Mayor Portem sent the reports. They'll be, um, they'll be sharing the duties tonight. Under public hearing, public hearings are conducted to allow public comment on specific advertised issues such as rezoning, ordinance, policy development, operating budget, and other legislative actions to be considered by a city commission. For public hearings related to zoning, including amendments to the Unified Development Code or quasi judicial decisions as defined in Article Four of the UDC. All persons who wish to address the Board of Commissioners during the public hearing must sign up via sign-in sheet, which is to my right of my Ms. Michelle, providing their names and address, and whether they are for or against proposed zoning or quasi judicial decision. I, as well as Commissioner Tremont Tinsley, are members of the Department of Griffin, so we'll feel the same. This board will take care of it.
At this time, the Board of Commissioners will conduct a public hearing for agenda item number one, as noticed on the agenda as follows. Receive comments regarding a request for a special use permit for a place of assembly for property located at ten twenty-five South Hill Street. Director of Planning and Development, Phil Haynes, will address it. Credit copies of the adopted standard governing, the exercise applicable to the aforementioned application factors for consideration and procedures governing the hearing are available to the public. Speakers are responsible for establishing a record through the presentation of facts and supporting documentation or other evidence for consideration by the board for, and for review on appeal if applicable.
Good evening. The applicant, Steve Traywick, is seeking approval of a special use permit. Can you hear me?
How about now?
Okay. Let me just take it off. How about there? Okay. Um, the applicant, Steve Traywick, is seeking approval of a special use permit for a place of assembly at ten twenty-five South Hill Street. This address is owned by the Kiwanis Club of Griffin Foundation and is the location of the Kiwanis Fairgrounds. This parcel is in institutional, the zoning district, and it's also within the airport overlay district. A place of assembly is only permitted in institutional and the airport overlay district through the approval of a special use permit. Just to note, it does meet both requirements for a special use, the two hundred, um, foot rope frontage and also the two acres. It's larger than that. Staff recommends approval of the special use permit twenty-four dash S U P dash zero four submitted by Steve Traywick to allow for a special use permit for a place of assembly located at ten twenty-five South Hill Street. Since there was not a quorum for the planning and zoning board meeting on Monday, August nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, only staff recommendation afforded to the Board of Commissioners for review and consideration.
At this time, we will call persons who have signed up to speak in favor of the application, beginning with the applicant. Those in favor of the application will collectively have ten minutes to speak, but the applicant is permitted to utilize all ten minutes or reserve time for rebuttal. Any remaining time will be divided among anyone else who has signed up to speak in favor of the application.
Good afternoon, and I'm Steve Traywick. I'm also a member of the Kiwanis Club of Griffin. I come before you to ask for approval of the special use permit. We are beginning in twenty-four days, hopefully our seventy-six fair. Fallin County Kiwanis Club of, Kiwanis Club of Griffin has nothing more than want to give back to this community. We want to be good stewards of our property. We want to represent this community to the very best of our ability. If you know anything about Kiwanis, you know that the money we earn comes right back into this community to help support our children. Without the special use permit, we can't do that. We can't host our fair and the other things that we do. Therefore, we cannot give back to this community. So I humbly request that you vote to approve the special use permit.
Thank you. Is, is there anyone else that would like to speak in favor of the application? Okay. At this time, we will call persons who have signed up to speak in opposition of the application. Opponents will collectively have ten minutes to speak, and more than one person has signed up to speak, the ten minutes will be divided among them. Okay, comments and discussion on the board, and it will be reserved until the item is called for consideration. However, does anyone on the board have any questions for staff or applicants or speakers? Okay. This concludes this public hearing, item number one.
Thank you, Ms. Ward. All right. Uh, at this time, the Board of Commissioners will conduct a public hearing for agenda item number two, as noticed, immigrant agenda as follows. Receive comments regarding a request for variance in minimum lot size, minimum setbacks, and minimum heated floor area per dwelling unit requirement for a lot combination of one sixty-two and one sixty-four Melton Street, strength for planning and development, show Haynes will address. Credit copies of the adopted standard governing of this exercise applicable to the aforementioned decision factors for consideration and procedures governing the hearing are available to the public. Speakers are responsible for establishing a record through the presentation of facts and supporting documentation or other evidence for consideration by the board and for review on appeal if applicable. Right there, Michelle Haynes. Welcome.
Good evening again. The applicant, Brian Wesley, is requesting a variance from Article seven oh six, which states the physical requirements for the creation of a new parcel and the standard and placement of a new residential dwelling. Mr. Wesley would like to combine one sixty-two and one sixty-four Melton Street to create a larger lot, and then plans to build a sixty hundred and fifty square foot house. Currently, one sixty-two Melton Street is approximately point one four acres, and one sixty-four Melton Street is approximately point two one. The new parcel will be around point three six. The proposed parcel and house do not meet the following minimum requirements: the lot size, the setbacks, and the heated floor area per dwelling unit for low-density residential B zoning district. A variance is required to create a new parcel and to build a house that is less than eighteen hundred seated square feet. Just to note, uh, one sixty-four Melton was a part of the nuisance abatement program, and the house was demolished in two thousand and twenty-two. Planning and development staff recommends approval of the variance request twenty-four dash B A R dash zero two from the minimum lot size, minimum setbacks, and minimum heated floor area per square foot per dwelling unit requirements for the lot combination of one sixty-two and one sixty-four Melton Street submitted by Brian Wesley.
Thank you very much. And at this time, we will call persons who have signed up to speak in favor of the application, beginning with applicant, and no one, no one has signed up as a proponent or the applicant. And now at this time, we will call persons that have signed up to speak in opposition to the application. And do we have anybody saying on that? Nope. At this time, comments and discussion by the board, if any, will be reserved until the item is called for consideration. However, does anyone from the board have any questions for staff, the applicant, or the speaker? This concludes public hearing agenda item. All right, moving into the consent agenda, we have items three, three, eight. We have a motion to approve the consent agenda. Commissioner Murray with a motion, second by Commissioner Ward. All in favor of the consent agenda, please signal by raising hand. Seven zero, consent agenda. And I'm turning over item under the regular agenda, item nine. Uh, Ms. Ward will take care of it.
Um, consider a request for a special use permit for a place of assembly for property located at ten twenty-five South Hill Street. Okay. We have a motion by Commissioner McCord and a second by Commissioner Murray. Any questions? All in favor, let me know by just calling. So five, zero, two.
Item ten, ten is consider request for variance from the minimum size, from the minimum lot size, minimum setbacks, and minimum heated floor area per dwelling unit requirement for the lot combination of one sixty-two and one sixty-four Melton Street. The motion approved. No questions? That's in this question.
Oh, okay.
We have a motion to approve. Motion by Mr. Wright, we're motion to approve, second by Commissioner Murray. All in favor, please signal by raising hand. Seven zero. Item eleven, is considered the amendment to the City of Griffin Board of Commissioners' regular meeting on August thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. Commissioner before Ms. F, we have a motion to approve. Commissioner Tinsley with a motion, second by Commissioner Ward. All in favor of the amendment, please signal by raising hand. Six, zero, one, with Mr. McCord abstaining. Item twelve is considered pass order forms to the master service room between the City of Griffin and Paragon Consulting Group in an amount of one hundred and seventy-one thousand, six hundred and forty-five dollars for project coordination and meeting facilities, potholing, construction plans, city administration, and construction management, the State Street and Bank Street redesign, but Commissioner Ward with a motion, second by Commissioner Murray. All in favor, please signal by raising hand. Seven zero. Item thirteen is considered resolution to purchase two sixteen South Thursday Avenue in amount of one hundred and forty-five thousand dollars for the expansion of the Oak Hill Cemetery. Commissioner Tinsley with a motion, second by Commissioner Murray. All in favor of acquisition resolution, please signal by raising hand. Seven zero. Item fourteen is considered third amendment to the power purchase contract between VA Power and City of Griffin, adding exhibit C. Commissioner Murray with a motion, second by Commissioner Ward. All in favor of the amendment, please signal by raising hand. Seven zero. Item fifteen is considered the nullification of the previously proposed P O number twenty-five dash zero zero three four for the purchase of a Raymond forty-seven fifty sit-down electric forklift for fiber-related material handling in the amount of forty-two thousand, four hundred and ninety dollars and fifty cents from Carolina Handling LLC, and consider the purchase of one Raymond forty-seven fifty sit-down electric forklift for fiber-related material handling in the amount of forty-six thousand, two hundred and sixty-eight dollars from Carolina Handling LLC, lowest quote. Commissioner Ward with a motion, second by Commissioner Wright. All in favor of approval, please signal by raising hand. Seven zero. Item sixteen is considered fiber relocation license services at historic City Hall from Four Seasons Table Construction, lowest quote, in the amount of thirty-five thousand, eleven dollars and twenty-two cents. Commissioner Ward with a motion, second by Commissioner Wright. All in favor, please signal by raising hand. Seven zero. Item seventeen is considered regulatory compliance amendment through fiscal year twenty-five with no F. Amendment, thank you. Through fiscal year twenty-five with lost atoms in the amount of ninety-five hundred dollars under the previously approved master service agreement. Commissioner Ward with a motion, second, second by Commissioner Wright. All in favor, please signal by raising hand. Seven zero. Item eighteen is considered resolution for since twenty-six U S C, one forty-seven F, Internal Revenue Code of nineteen eighty-six, as amended approving the issuance of revenue bonds by the housing authority of the City of Griffin, Georgia in an amount not to exceed forty million dollars for the Northside Hills LP for the purpose of financing all or a portion of the cost of the acquisition, construction, and the equipment of the sixty-four unit home family housing complex located at six fifteen North Side Drive, Griffin, Georgia. Commissioner Ward with a motion to approve, second, second by Commissioner Wright. All in favor of the resolution, please signal by raising hand. Seven zero. Item nineteen is considered lease agreement between City of Griffin and Life Radio Ministries for suite five oh four and One Griffin Center in the unit share, annual rent amount of twenty-two thousand, seven hundred and seventy-one dollars and forty cents. Commissioner Ward with a motion to approve, second by Commissioner Tinsley. All in favor, please signal by raising hand. Seven zero. And that's our agenda for tonight. City manager report. Good evening.
Agenda item approval that actually sets us on track to start the renovations to this building. So we will start with the roof about mid-September and a few more weeks. And we are currently working on architectural drawings for One Griffin Center. This is to remind you of access people, those that we see put into place for, um, our public and then also our employees. And then the parking deck will not start until the spring. We'll have so much else going on. You can't really start a project like that in the middle of the winter. It's not going to start next spring. Just to give you an update there, so the, um, radio station that's been in the basement longer than we have been here will be moving up to six four. And so we're looking forward to all of those changes. I think it'll be easy for those public and for our employees. Also, just a reminder that Citizens Government Academy starts next Thursday. It's hard to believe that most Labor Day is Monday. Um, we are accepting applications until Friday, and we invite all to attend the first night. It will be in here in the port ring. I am the presentation at night, talking about local government. Um, it begins at six o'clock, and we will end at eight thirty, and we'll have employees for dinner. Um, also, just wanted to let you all know that Brian Miller and Heather Robinson spoke at the Georgia Day on Town Association Conference today in Thomasville, Georgia in regards to his cutting core, um, uh, business here and specifically on public credit partnerships. And he's already been asked franchise, uh, at a couple of different places throughout the state, and they felt that they represented Griffin very well, or told that they represented Griffin very well, so very proud of them. Um, the fall District Four meeting is in warm springs on September twenty-fifth from eleven A M. to one P M. So if you would like to attend, please get with us. We're R S P. It is free, but because there is a meal provided, we do have to. It is free, but because there is a meal provided, we do have to reserve your space to be able to eat. And then lastly, in regards to the concerns expressed tonight in Western for Hills, a few of those we had already been aware of. So tomorrow morning, when I have my staff meeting with the directors, I will get with all of them on the things that, what their staff will look at and see where we are. Having, of course, is done by Rose and Mr. Disessment. I've had contractors, so depending on where that falls, as regards to rest for Rose and the city. I have been told that it is next year, but we will look at that to make sure that that is still where it needs to be. And I'll also talk to slum water about their, their property that is that there. If there's a way that we can, sixteen, if it can be, sort of see still in through the neighborhood, but we'll address all of that with the directors. All right.
Thank you. Mr. Whalen?
I have no comment.
We're gonna go this way this time. Give Rose a little break. To Mr. McCord.
Oh, oh, yeah.
Commissioner Wright. Nothing at this time. Ms. Ward.
I have nothing.
Commissioner Tinsley.
Yeah. You figured that out?
Nope. Nothing there. Commissioner Murray.
I just wanna thank everybody for coming. Good to see when we have almost a half full room, so please come back. Thank you.
Commissioner Kurt. Just wanna thank staff for their hard work this past week. I know it's been a tough, trying situation, but y'all have all worked diligently. And for the citizens that came out and visited tonight, we're glad to have you. And please feel free, we've got an open door policy to reach out to any of your commissioners or staff about your concerns before working with you. We collaborate and love, so thank you. Do we have a motion to adjourn tonight? Mr. Tinsley with a motion, seconded by Commissioner Murray. All in favor, please signal by raising your hand. Seven zero.